Original user, it said.
He said we're all original ones. Evening, Tom.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Hello. How do you like your friend, Tom?
He says he loves Kurt.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Yeah, he sounds good. Just call him seven.
Hello, this is Terry.
Yeah, well, I'll just explain, in the absence of Terry, who's not very well, she's going to ask if I could chair this particular meeting.
Second, Terry. Can we just have a proposal for a second, don't you need to do that?
Oh, right, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I propose, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Terry.
Half a second, Terry.
Who's in favour? You know, okay, thank you very much. Right, so, I declare this planning environmental committee meeting open. All right, so, licence evacuation procedures, we'll move that by now. It's all been recorded, I guess that you're filming.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Well, okay. And submissions from the public?
Yeah, yeah, I have on behalf.
Okay.
I was approached today because several people knew I would be on this planning meeting, and there's a reference back to the common by the doctor's practice, that when we approved the car park, there was planting of trees, but it seems to be reported that two trees were replanted, that subsequently died, and they've been chopped down, but there is no news on any replacements. Does anyone have any information?
The trees that have been recently cut down were in the hedge row because they were diseased, and we are going to look at replacing those ones anyway.
So there is an agenda for it, yeah?
They're putting some, and not like tiny trees, and we'll hopefully go to something a bit more substantial, so, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And they go very quickly.
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, they go very quickly.
Sure.
Yes, Tom.
Because it says, you're asking for submissions from the public. I just wanted to actually give you advice notice for the next year's committee engagement for a meeting. We are actually planning for March, so if you want that document date, I can actually give it to you now, so that if you can minute it, and so that you can put it on your calendar for the next year, that will be a great thing. Because we are also doing some, the, the 10th, the 10th of March.
That's our full council meeting.
10th?
Yeah, it is, and when it came through from South Gloss, I did go back to the lady in South Gloss and say-
That is not in our calendar right now, is it?
Yeah, it is, yeah. He did agree with the date, yeah, we can move.
Then I'll change it, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for informing me, so that I'm not being controversial, yeah.
Well done, Tom. And I've got something which quite a few members of the public have spoken to me about, but it's already on the agenda, so I'll talk to them about it when we get there. And, right, apologies for my absence, obviously Terry couldn't, because she's not well. And does everybody else that we know about?
No.
No, okay. Uh, declarations by members of the local government act 1972. I don't think we've got any more declarations, no. Announcements from the chair, well, as I'm standing in his chair, I don't have any announcements. Except for wish you all a happy Christmas, and prosperity for the new year. Um, so, the next item is to confirm the minutes of the 25th of November 2020, for correct record.
Yeah, fine, yeah.
Um, Ben in House here has proposed them. Would you like to second them? Is that first, head separate?
Yeah.
All in favour? Although it should we say?
You know.
Yeah, I'll say no.
You should have your page and sign the date after that, please, thank you.
And then the next point is 6.1, which is to consider matters on the agenda and not covered elsewhere. So the pinch point on the shared bookway pedestrian, so the cycleway, South Gloucestershire Council local transport priority, this link to Koby might be further distancing. Would you like to say something about this?
Yeah, it's just, you've got the update from South Gloss, it looks like they have finally agreed that we can have a physical side meeting in the new year, so I'll definitely let councillors know when we get data for that.
Yeah, okay. And there was something else I read there, I think on the first item, that, that, um, it was something a bit, perhaps a bit more positive. There's, about there's three possible outcomes, a simple, low cost, affordable solution, is identifying a program, and programs for immediate implementation, uh, new scheme is recommended, and more involved scheme identified, blah, blah, blah. Well, it's sort of positive, yeah, they are looking at it.
At least they're not ignoring us, but.
Yes, yes, which, we've got a bit of movement in 10 years, so it's not bad. Um, sorry, uh, right, the next one was 6.2, South Gloucestershire Council tree planting in Bradley Stove.
Yeah, so you have the update in your agenda pack, and I did send it out to councillors, um, to all councillors, I think, so I met with the South Gloucestershire University Officer and two members of the street care, around South Gloucester Street Care Grants Team, um. One of those, thank you very much, one of those two, uh, street care people has worked in Bradley Stove for many years, and so he was very knowledgeable, knowledgeable, knowledgeable about various areas for tree planting. So we've included the ones which councillors have raised, so grass verge on the junction of, I'm going to just add Heath.
Master John O'Tree, Chris.
Sorry, yeah. Just having councillor Praddy in, who I think has just arrived. Yeah, so that one, obviously, where they took down the ashtray, there was, there's, South Gloss have also identified this area, green space, a green open space on the northern side of Primrose Bridge, which is adjacent to Lapland Close. So, and there was that one. Then there is the meadow grass verge on the edge of the nature reserve, which was highlighted in green on the map that you've got in your agenda pack. Um, and then we flagged up the area which is red in, on the nature reserve, as not being appropriate, because that's where we have lots of picnickers and people playing ballgames in the summer. Um, and they've also identified the highway verges, some highway verges on Bates Paul Road. South Gloucester also looking at some other potential planting projects over the next few years. So there is sloping open ground by Paddock Close, where there is a possibility of planting a hogs or a group of trees. They're also looking at planting willows on steep bank by the street, soapways and palms of leaves, close to the motorway in Bankman. They've told us that they are intending to extend the wildflower beds on Brookway all the way down to the Virgin Media Cabinet, and that will hopefully be done for next year. Uh, they planted trees and wildflower beds on the bank by Rabbit Roundabout. We also identified the skate park as a possible location for potential biodiversity projects in the future. So South Gloucester Council will let us know when the tree planting sites have been finally agreed upon, and will send out posters and letters to the nearby residents. No assistance is required for the actual tree planting, but councillors will be welcome to visit the sites whilst the tree planting is taking place. And it's anticipated that the planting will take place between January, March 2021. They said they can plant during cold, not frosty weather, but once the temperature warms up, the tree planting will cease.
Did they not identify the bit by Ormond's Close? There's a quite big, um, grass area there.
No.
As you go around, you go to the top of Boseland, you've got the roundabout, you head towards the Trench Heart Bridge, and there's a green bit.
I will, I will mention that, yeah.
It's, um, the other access point to it is actually from Honey Suckle.
So Ormond's Close.
Is Ormond's, Ormond's Close bus stop?
On the left hand side.
Yeah. There's a, quite a bit, a bit of green there.
So that bus stop.
Yeah, Ormond's Close bus stop.
I'll let, I can pass that one on.
Okay. So moving on to item seven, to note the outcome of previous planning applications, the document for tentative planning environment issues. And it looks like everything that we decided, South Gloucestershire has agreed as well.
Yeah.
Pass on that one. Um, number eight.
And I know, sorry, can I just say, um, I know that councillors sometimes quite sceptical on, on what is the point of us commenting on planning applications because South Gloucester don't actually take what we say for granted. But the, the first one on that list, which is the Stratten House, seven stages meeting one, if you remember, that's the one with the hedge, where we were querying whether the hedge was going to be removed. In their conditions for granting it, it says, the replacement planting and subsequent initial maintenance of the new planting is to be carried out to the requirements of the South Gloucestershire Council Open Spaces Team, which was exactly our wording. So I thought that was quite positive, that they actually took a comment that we made.
Good.
On board.
So moving on, number eight, to prepare responses for the proper authorities regarding the planning of which reduction of the present state. We have five.
Yeah, so about a minute, whilst I just show my screen. Right, the first one is P223726TRE, which is works to reduce limbs on the eastward elevation by four metres to one oak tree, which is covered by South Gloucester TPO 2406, dated the 13th December 2006.
Seventy horn being pushed.
Yeah, sorry, about seventy horn being pushed. Apologies.
Have you broke it again?
Oh, probably. So this is, this is the, um, the, so it's that tree there. Hopefully, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so it's this tree here.
Yeah, that's great. Sure.
I'll show you in a minute.
This is set, Tom.
Yeah, so it's this tree at the end here. So there are, um, three comments from neighbours. Two have supported and one objects.
Tom. One, yeah, sure, I just wanted to know why the neighbour objected to it, because there is a, it's actually reducing it, reducing because of the elevation, so just wanted to know.
Give it a minute, I will, um. Now that's a sport one. A minute, strike that one. And we're served one, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yes, it is. It's come quite down today, this is a second one, so let's see the other one.
No, the two.
I'll just leave you to read that, I think, rather than reading it all out.
No, it's got no effect on how's the tree. I'm going to go into some of the tree.
But I don't think that would be an issue for me. It's reducing the limbs from one side. Is it because of, again, the factors? I don't think that would be an issue. Anyway. As the present TP are already in place, they cannot damage a tree by. I propose an objection, so.
Oh, you think Keith wants one of that?
Sorry, uh, who's got her hand up?
Keith.
Keith, yeah, would you like to say, Keith? Unmute yourself, Keith.
Yes, I'm using my speaker.
Maybe it's a mistake.
Am I unmuted?
Uh, you don't know. Yeah, you, you have your.
You can hand up.
I'll, I'll second that, um, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, good, it's saying mute on mine for some reason. Um, yeah, no, I'll second that, I mean, I can see what they're trying to do. Uh, the canopy of the tree is big, they want to take off some of the limbs, because quite a lot of the oaks locally at the moment are becoming quite dangerous. They drop, and obviously if it's in an area where somebody's garden or a path, it's, uh, it's likely to cause injury, so obviously the trees are getting very large at the moment, these oaks.
So we have a proser by Tom, seconded by Keith, who's in favour?
And maybe just give it that.
And see, none of us, yeah.
Thank you very much, councillors.
Good.
Next.
Number two.
Give it a minute.
An erection of a single storey rear extension to form additional living accommodation, installation of hip and gable roof extensions and two rear dormers to facilitate loft conversion, seven, Bracken Dean.
So I can show you. So it is, it's this house here, and that is the rear of it, so it looks on to Brookway. To its reimage. It's this house here. And it's one with three D, so it is a light.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's what's there at the moment, and this is what they want to put on.
Just wondering how does it affect the next door? To the, to the, from the rear to the right.
They're keeping the width, aren't they? They're not going to be wider.
Yeah.
No, they're just going further into the, uh, so I'll show you.
Presume it's, it's not any wider, it's difficult to see from that perspective.
This one's, this one's quite good.
Yeah, the plan should do. And then so.
So that is the existing block plan. And, so it's this one here, obviously with the, it's a pre-omet.
Yeah, it's, it's like come out a bit further.
That's the proposed block plan.
Maybe it will, it will work.
Anybody got any comments?
There's, uh, there's a comment from neighbour who is opposite them, and says that they've got no objection whatever to the proposed extension, knowing the residents, as we do, wish all works to be done to the highest possible standard.
When you say opposite, is it opposite?
I think it's opposite in.
Bracken Dean?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, not going to affect that many houses.
A different roof line already to several of the houses, so we're actually going to straighten up the roof line.
Sorry, which one? That one?
Yeah, because if you look at the roof line, you've got it already, isn't it?
Yeah, it's got like.
Yeah.
It's in there, looks a bit like it's had corners.
Well, actually straighten the roof line up.
Well, it's not touching that roof, is it?
Yeah, it is. Yeah, it's coming, yeah, it's coming out, so it's straight up there, yeah.
So they did the extension on the back and sorting the roof out?
Yeah.
Got the two dormers in it.
Right, two dormers.
Yeah. Installation of hip to gable roof extension and two.
Obviously, the two dormers are coming out the back, so I can't object to that.
And, yeah, so you can see where they, it started at the top part bit, and they've straightened it up properly, yeah.
Let's second that, Keith, a lot deeper, tell me.
Okay, I'll propose it then. Uh, who's in favour? Keith?
Yeah, hands up. Tom, are you in favour?
I'll, I'll stay on this one.
Okay.
Sorry, how about us, Tom, Alex?
It's, um, all that Tom's been talking about.
That's sixteen total, I want to say, thank you very much.
So the next one is erection of one and a half storey dwellings with access and associated works. Big fourteen grand place.
Over the second.
Alex Hemming.
So I show you. So this, it's this googolim, so this is the googol image. So it's here, it's this garage and the piece of land there. I'll show you.
It's a one and a half storey dwelling. The access and associated works.
Is there a granny next?
It is piece of land here.
Okay, are they making it granny next, what they're doing to do?
They are taking down, so take the D.
So they're chopping down the garage and building.
Yeah, they're taking the garage, they're cutting it down by half, and then building a house, like, using the heart of the garage that's left, and building a house on essentially that bit of land there.
Oh, extra houses.
Um, there is.
There's next to it, isn't there, from the.
Yeah, there is, yeah, there's, so, yeah, there is, there, of course, a car parking, and then there's car parking there for that house, and there's car parking there for the one and a half storey house.
Are they losing, what about the car parking space? What would happen to that?
A minute.
It's essentially a coach, some of that's there. Yeah, I mean, the upstairs, they're really tidy.
What's the, um, comments from the neighbours?
Give it a minute, while I just.
Well, the upstairs would be bigger than downstairs.
Which one's this?
It was, um, it's built to live, isn't it? Yeah, that's what I mean, so you've got, if you've got the bottom, build a, of the building is the garage for your place. So that's where you have one and a half.
This, you can see where the parking is, so there's parking there of that house, and then there's parking over there for the other house. They also have a visitor park, no, they own another property and they have another bit of parking on the other side of the road. Their house.
And they're maintaining one gar, half a garage, yeah?
No, they're changing the garage into the house.
So they're not really going to have enough on-site parking then, are they?
I think they're very small houses. So sustainable transport, and their comment is here. Which is parking people this way, so.
So it's coming from the panel.
I'd like to see what I did there.
Yeah, I saw that they had issued, but they haven't. Just one street car parking space, and I still want to.
Well, second to last, I'm tired of staying there, Shakes, I don't consider the road entirely not just the location.
But, I don't know what to say. Don't rub it out now, to read it.
Sorry.
I was reading it, yeah, completely. One of the things, um, which I'm always thinking, it's our own planning offices that creates the parking issues, one way or the other, because they will see a loop and do that, and what next happens is when there is a visitor or actually have, they have two cars, then there will be chock-a-block. So I don't understand, why can't they wait in? Once the car parking space is gone, it's gone forever, and it's actually aggravating the situation.
Yeah, um.
Keith's got his hand up as well.
Sorry, Keith, what do you want to say? Keith?
Yeah.
You've got your hand up, and you're on mute.
I, I keep saying unmute, and it's not, it's not registering in your head.
You know.
Are you hearing me?
Yeah.
Ah, right, good. There's two neighbour comments on this one, isn't there?
There are.
What were the neighbours' comments?
Right, so.
And my objection, lack of parking, overdeveloped site. Oh, right.
Yeah, the two, the two comments are the same comments from the, the same resident who.
Yeah.
Submitted a letter and also filled in the online one, I think, so it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, anyway, I don't like losing the park. You know, if there is a losing of, like, a car parking space, I always used to, I'm a traditional objector to it. I don't differ on this case either, because I have no problem in someone actually making a dwelling on top, but losing the one's car parking space is not a good sign for Bradley Stove, which is already chock-a-block and we have not enough space for car parking. And here they mentioned about, that guy has got four cars, and this is not enough.
I accept everything you say, Tom, and I'll say, except what this neighbour says. One issue is, though, it says it comes within the South Gloucestershire requirements, according to the letter from South Gloucester.
You're right, you're right, you know, that is what I'm saying, okay? Because of these loopholes, people are actually making, bending the, mentoring the rules and doing these kind of things. Why the car park, the garage was there, was actually for a reason. If there isn't any space, they are to make sure that the spaces are being, but make sure. Speaking of, I also have garage. So I don't think it'll be deferred to, according to someone's whims and fancies. And I, 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 I have objected to it, but others, other councillors have the freedom, others have the liberty to actually take what stand they prefer, so I am not dictating anything, so I'm just putting my objection.
Would the objection be a security requirement, Tom?
Yes, overdevelopment and loss of car parking spaces, and this is actually not determined, not good for a neighbourhood like Bradley Stone, that's it.
Ben's happy to second Tom's subject. Does anybody else have any feelings on it?
Yeah, I would agree with Tom on that.
Oh, it was, is that overdevelopment, loss of car parking and loss of residential immunity?
Yes, that's right. Especially for a neighbourhood like Bradley Stone.
So that was posed by Tom.
It was by Tom, settled by Ben. Um, would you like to go on that proposal, please?
Yeah.
So we've got, uh, Andy?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
Keith?
Yeah.
You announced the objection?
Thank you.
Hey, well done. Next one then is, um, uh, number four, erection of a first floor site extension to form additional living accommodation, five Hells Horn Clues. And in twenty stroke twenty three nine eight nine F. Oliver, tip in.
Is this house here?
Yeah.
It's this one here?
Yeah.
It's the build on to that, up there.
Okay. Now, they lose the garage?
Well, we've still got the garage door, but if you actually, when you zoom in, yes, the garage is.
Lost the garage?
Yeah. So that is, this is what's there at the moment, and they are gonna have this bit as a store area, and then.
So it looks like a garage, but it's not a garage?
Yeah, so it's going to be the storage and then the playroom, that would be, that's where the garage was.
Can we just go down a little bit on that same plan? That brown board plan?
So, this is our, our key.
I'd just like to see the detail of the plan.
Sorry.
Can we just, um, close in a little bit, see the whole of that man?
That bit, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is it up? So we've got office, playroom, store, and extra bedrooms upstairs.
We're actually going to end up with six bedrooms?
Oh, that's in competition with you, Tom. Um.
But they have identified that there will be, at the moment they have two car parking spaces, but there will be three car parking spaces.
Is there objections from any neighbours?
Hmm, no. Nothing at all, it's been.
Any thoughts from the rest of the committee?
I think there's other houses in that range that are very similar to that already, actually. There is, Sharon, can you do the street scene one a minute, identify the front of that house?
This one?
Yeah, that's it, yeah, okay, yeah, I'm happy with that, I would move it. I second that.
Keith proposed, Andy's second. And there's a favour. Let's, that's, uh, that is.
Yeah, so, thank you very much.
So, the last one, number five, is erection of two storey side and single storey rear extension to form additional living accommodation, forty one Two Falls Drive.
And the second?
And I have the addition P twenty twenty three nine nine two F. Two storey sites, and there's probably a lot of differences.
So it's this house on the other here?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, so it's this one here?
Yeah.
But it's put on there, and it's like that.
Did they actually finish building those?
Yeah, it does look a bit.
Old.
Chop off, doesn't it, now? Over the minute, so, um. So that's what's there at the moment. Kelly Bronn.
Oh, it's going the other side, I thought we were going across the garden.
No, it's filling in.
Yeah.
It's got the, like, uh, bit on the back, it's up there.
Yeah.
Keith's got his hand up there.
Oh, there's site plant showing what's left of it. Forty one.
So this is it there? That on there, and that back, and that's just the bottom, quite a big problem, see?
Yeah, it is a big problem.
Coming to bed, just.
And there goes all this planting, and there's all this fauna there on that side. Any comments from any members of the committee?
Keith's got his hand up.
Okay, Keith? Put your hand up, Keith.
You're on mute.
Move it.
Who wants to move it?
Yeah, it's a bit of an odd position for that house, but it has got the space. Uh, but, you know, I think it would tidy it up personally, like Ed said, it looks like half a house.
Yeah.
That's true. Agree? Second?
Tom's second, Keith proposed, Tom's second. Is in favour? Yeah, it's you, Adam.
Thank you very much, and I keep having to.
So that's that one, now we move on to, um, um.
Just gonna stop screen sharing, second.
Um. Yeah, we're talking about the first law is the, um, rips that sweet metro bus extension, um, this also includes the underbridge replacement, yeah?
Yes.
Okay, um, if we could just talk very briefly, um, I've had quite a few phone calls, although it's outside our patch, um, that the objections are that the residents um, in the area have suffered a fair bit with noise, uh, disruption because they, yeah, they can't use that road, et cetera, et cetera, for quite a considerable amount of time. Bearing in mind it was also extended because of Covid, et cetera. And now they want to, on Christmas Day, from half past midnight, to five minutes to eight on Christmas Day, doing tampering work, and it follows up on, uh, from eight o'clock, sorry, ten o'clock on Friday night through to six o'clock on the twenty sixth Boxing Day, and again eight o'clock until six o'clock in the morning on the twenty seventh. And they feel that they've had enough disruption over last year, really, practically. Um, and they're a bit fed up that they're now also doing on Christmas Day, Boxing Day, and the twenty seventh. It's probably too late for us to do anything as far as getting it stopped, or, you know. And, and I can sort of understand that it's probably the, uh, the days where the railway's not being used somewhat to sort of an ideal time for them, but I'm thinking really on Christmas Day, Boxing Day, and the twenty seventh. And I've had quite a few phone calls and a few, um, uh, emails, and there's a blog as well going on on the neighbourhood of Bradley Stone. That's it. Um, and I don't know whether we, yeah, whether we can write a letter or an email to Griffiths, the builders, the.
Chair?
Yes, Tom?
Thank you, um, because, um, as it's a tampering ship, I think it's maybe packing or flattening or anything like that. So can we ask the network rail and the contractor, um, Griffiths to, that shares you on Sunday?
Yeah.
Yeah, to, to have, what's it called, the soundproof barriers, so that it would be beneficial for all, I mean, out of the neighbours? Can we actually put that?
Chair?
Yes, okay.
Yeah, it, as you know, it's in my ward, uh, like you, we were inundated. Uh, I got told by Lisa, the communications person, that this was going to be a proposal, and I immediately said, this is gonna go down like a very big lead balloon. I said, these residents have put up with hell, uh, with the extension and everything else, I accept that there is the need because this is important to be able to ma, ma, maintain the safety of the rail track in, when it's in use, but, come on, I mean, twenty-four, forty-eight hours, I mean, they could really have spared these residents all this problem, they are gonna put up noise, uh, screening, uh, but, you know, I think this mirrors something that went on last Christmas, if I recall, somewhere else. And, you know, the people get very angry, obviously, in a normal Christmas period, but this is not a normal Christmas period. More people are gonna be at home with their families, and this is gonna cause an absolute, well, unprecedented noise and disturbance, and I would say that from our perspective here, and I, I, you know, I respect Tony, the letter that you did, I saw that, and, you know, I know that the people in our area fully support the support that you've given them, and I really do think that Bradley Stoke Town Council should, you know, come behind this and say, look, you know, that the rail really have not given a lot of thought to this. The, the project manager, Griffiths, um, yes, they want to, or they're putting out that this needs to be done, but Lisa, when I spoke to her, she said that the letter was going to imply that if people had any concerns at all, they should make it to Network Rail and not the project team. Now, I'm sorry, but I think they're trying to fudge this.
Yeah.
Network Rail must take full responsibility for this. And that's my, my view as a local member, and I know that's shared by both the other local members and the parish town stories, Stoke Gifford. So I respect Bradley Stoke a lot for coming behind us and supporting us and the residents on this.
I don't know whether we can get a letter written to Network Rail, Griffiths and South Gloucester about it?
Well, we can, yeah, we can, I can. I can send an email to them saying that how disappointed that, you know, we think it's important what they're doing to the residents.
On, on, three days of the year, where, where it's, uh, technically a national holiday. That was, that's, uh, something I wanted to bring up. That, like you, Keith, we've been inundated with emails and objections to this. Just how that they've got to do, oh, what's the body, you know?
Chair, I just also, can, can I just?
Sure, go ahead.
They, because the risk, they're planning to put a noise barrier fencing during the directional work. So whether we have to check with them to make sure that it is sufficient for the, uh, the purpose of the process or procedure, and there will be any disturbance, or what, what do you think? Because they are already doing a whole thing.
We're, we're sadly, we're like, two days away from it happening, um, and.
That's right.
We're, I doubt, you know, all I think we can do is to raise an objection from us as Bradley Stone Town Council.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
I'd be right there.
Talking with you, thank you.
See, you know, we've done our bit then, um, to say we're not happy. And, um, that's it, yeah, so after Luke, well, is there anything else on that, on this particular thing about the?
No, that's all.
But, Chair?
Yes?
The, the good thing is that they are starting the lowering work, the road lowering work underneath the railing, so that is actually what's going to happen, so.
Yeah.
All we can.
There we go. And right, nine point two, um, potential S one O six contributions arising from public open space requirements need to develop under eighty-five twenty at Waverly Cottage east of Arston.
So you, you have the, I'm not gonna read that, but you have it in your agenda, so it was just, um, South Gloucester, obviously, they go out to surrounding areas and they ask, um, they identify the areas which are theoretically missing from the development, and they wanted us to give sort of our view of the priorities of the list which are in table one.
Allotments.
I think, I think allotments could be quite high on that list, because that is.
I think, too, we do, yeah.
The areas very lacking in, yeah.
Yeah, well, and one of the good things about that, maintenance contribution is only five thousand three hundred ninety-four pounds eighty-six feet. As the maintenance on all the rest is quite considerable.
Yeah.
I would agree with Andy, that's definitely. We, this, this is, section one O six money is gonna go to State Gifford, isn't it?
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't come to us, but what South Gloucester do is they go out to like the surrounding areas and they just ask what on Beak's view is on what their, what the money, you know, the priority, but, but yeah, so you can, you don't actually have to list them all in order, but if you identify one, you think is a priority, then like allotments, then.
So definitely local allotments would be a real boon, wouldn't it? I, I think personally, most of the money will go to Winterborne, because part of their allotment site has just been built on. At the top of Beacon Hill, Beacon Lake.
But then perhaps, so perhaps we could say that, and actually I think that Bradley Stoke residents can use, um, Winterborne allotment, so perhaps we could include that in, that would be allotments that Bradley Stoke residents could use.
But, I think we need to explain that part to the, our residents, uh, what the benefit is, because when you look at the maintenance contributions, the informal creation of open spaces, that has got the highest amount of money, one hundred and seventeen thousand pound plus, you know? Whereas the allotments, it's only five thousand three hundred and ninety-four, isn't it?
Yeah, yes, Tom, you're right. Not because of, maybe we could just make it on our website, to say that we can add there allotments available? If there are.
When they're off, yes.
When, yeah, and when they might be, if they decide on that.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's that date.
So are you happy for me to reply there about the allotment?
Yes, I agree with. I, yeah, Tom proposed it, I'll second that, to get, uh, Sharon to write a letter.
The first in favour, sorry?
Yeah, there's a favour.
Thank you very much.
Right, number ten, to deal with matters relating to health and safety, quarterly health and safety report.
Add that in your agenda, Tom?
Yes. I think that, um, the price was six hundred and fifty quid. It's, um, I think it was quite expensive, no? Yeah, uh. The first aid work cost for two people, seven hundred and ten quid. I thought that was a bit expensive.
Which one's that, sorry?
Um, um, the first of the twelve. It says all sites, first aid at work cost, one day, times two.
Yeah, that's, that's two lots of one day's, well, it's about, two months for two people.
So I still think that's a bit, yeah. Is it, we've just, we're using equal health and safety because we've used them in the past or?
Um, yeah.
Do we try and?
No, it's definitely worse, we could look at, absolutely, go out in the market place, look at other places. Definitely, yeah. We can do that. There's actually different shades and different toners, really different things, tones, fashions, sounds like so.
Right, I, if, I could probably get the, uh, paramedic teacher, who was gonna stay close, so probably a lot less of them. He teaches all the paramedics. Anyway, um, and that's got to be reviewed every three years, the first aid. So, um, so what we look at on this one, the health and safety report?
We normally accept the report, you're happy with it and then propose a vote, thanks for it.
What, if you did to?